Have a second by Mr. Warwick, all those in favor? Okay, motion carries, five to zero. Before I go to the regular agenda, I just want to make a note, I see that the CI Cleveland ISD homecoming parade will be like next Thursday and we're gonna be at TML and you know, we're not gonna be able to participate this year, but I see we have Ms. Tanya Clark, just send word to Mr. Barnes and the leadership that we really, this is a big deal for us to parade every year, but also it's our yearly convention and we gotta be there, you know, but every year we always have a big float and I just hope that this year, you know, is bigger and better than ever and I'm sure it will, so, but thank you once again for Cleveland ISD. So, you know I got history with y'all too, so. Okay, yes ma'am, regular agenda, okay, item number 10, budget amendment for full-time staff position, okay? This was an item requested by Ms. Hall and second by Mr. Buckley for discussion.
Thank you, Mayor, and so my questions are for Ashley, and so I know that you had put into your reports that we get in regards to a need for full-time event staff, and so I wanted to have an opportunity since I've seen it kind of repeatedly, for you to have a chance to kind of tell us what was going on. I know that you stay very busy as far as renting out facilities and things like that, so that, do you have enough help? Is it a full-time position? Is it technology or other things that can help you out? But I had just seen it come up frequently about a need for this position and thought that a conversation would help us clarify it.
For the Civic Center, we definitely stay busy. We are a revolving door when it comes to the Civic Center. We also are a revolving door when it comes to stansil rentals and things like that, and not just taking care of those, but we also take care of city-sponsored events. You can always use more hands, I think all the departments have kind of seen that, that you know, what we do is a lot at times, but we just filled the event coordinator position. It is a part-time position. We did not budget in this fiscal year to make that a full-time position, but it is something that we have discussed and is in the works for possibly fiscal year 26. But we make it work with the staff that we do have and not just with Civic Center, we also handle facility service, so we are also, I guess in a sense, making sure that we're covering all events and keeping up with the custodial and inventory as well for other facilities. So it's, it's a job, it's a lot at times, but we, we manage and now being fully staffed, you know, we're smooth sailing, I guess you could say right now.
So you're able with being fully staffed with part-time positions, you're able to meet all of the needs of the different hats?
We're making it work as best as possible, yes.
So it is not something that is a more immediate fix or need, it would be not for another year?
Correct, correct, and that's, we just, it's for fiscal year 26 discussion, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Kind of want to add to that a little. Lee and I meet, you know, quite a bit and, you know, early on, you know, he said that, you know, he was gonna come in and wait about, you know, four to six months, evaluate every department, you know, and I think I told the staff ahead of time that, you know, you're probably gonna have changes being made, which we, we have made changes and probably gonna make more changes going forward, but I would just like for him to have an opportunity to completely evaluate, you know, every department from the library to public works, first responders, Civic Center, you know, just, just a whole ball of wax, and I think that'll be a benefit to us, and, and so probably within the next 30 days to, you know, 60 days, he'll have everything evaluated and I think that we can, that'll be something, you know, that his vision on what we need, okay? And I'd just like to give him that opportunity, you know, before we do that, and he might decide, well, we can't wait till next year's budget, we want to go ahead and do it now, you know, but, but I'm glad this came up because we had already, you know, talked about it and that's what he's doing now, he's right in the middle of, you know, looking at everything, so. But you enjoying that?
I completely understand, Councilwoman, and, and that's what we're gonna try to do is, you know, it's called an organizational assessment, I want to try to go through and see, I did meet with you as well and I do understand the importance and I know Ashley's brought it up several times. I think we are behind a little bit in manpower and in a lot of areas, I think the goal is gonna be to assess all that and then try to prioritize where it's needed the most, and then obviously I want to try to bring that to the table this following budget year to try to maybe see if we could add some employees, but that's obviously gonna depend on where we end up with our, our budget next year, but that's the goal.
But with being fully staffed, you are able to efficiently do all the things you do, because again, with all the rentals and all the things you're doing, you're, you're able to make it work, as you said.
So we have three admin staff that are, two are full-time, myself and Marina, we have a part-time that just started who is also our event coordinator, who has the background in doing events, so a lot of that in the past, I think Marina and I have both juggled to make sure that the events, city-sponsored as well as the in-house events or private events are taken care of, but now that we have someone on staff who actually knows events, has done events and things like that, it kind of allows for us to each concentrate on, you know, the operations evenly, instead of just one person working on this or all having to work on this, we can kind of evenly disperse and get the job done.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you, Ashley. Okay, any other discussion? Okay, we're gonna go on to, okay, that'll also be number 11.
Yeah, and so Mayor, and, and it's actually not as far as high school event support, I actually had a question about internships for high school age students, that it's very part-time because staffing and needing help in different places, part-time and full-time positions and salaries and benefits do add up, but when, when we have an opportunity through job development and job training, especially with the CTE programs and things at the high school, a discussion about whether or not we could open some pathways to do an internship style, whether the youth work assisting a few hours a week with the events or a few hours a week in the library or in the water department stuffing envelopes, so it wasn't about high school events necessarily, but just having youth for job training because that's important to like grow your own, provide opportunities for them to be exposed to working. Also with internships and using youth, the cost is lower because I was, I was suggesting or ran numbers whenever I sent an email and spoke with Mr. Tipton, if we are open until 6:00 PM now, and that gives our high school students down the road an opportunity to maybe work 4:00 to 6:00 PM, so like eight to 10 hours a week, and for high school students, you know, something like $10, $12 an hour, they're making a little bit of money because they're not paying their own bills, but it's giving them resume experience and things that they're getting into, you know, for their college applications, so if we had four internship, whether high school or college age internships that were super part-time, at about $100 a week for eight to 10 hours a week, that only costs a total of $20,800 a year to have four people to help, and so I don't know if that's something we can look into as well as using maybe the economic development budget on that if it's a job training program or internship, because I know that they have different line items or different allowable, allowable expenses, but it seems like we could do something good for the youth, do something for the staff that needs help in the meantime while we're waiting on other positions to get a couple of responsible youth, because we do have several in the community that come out and volunteer anyway, and so it's just paying them for their time and getting them involved as like a pathway internship style, so that was the question about whether or not that's something that would be feasible.
Okay. Rachel, I'm glad you, you brought that to the table because I think that going forward, that's something that we really need to look into. Matter of fact, I was at the high school a couple of weeks ago, and matter of fact, I have another deal there tomorrow, and that was mentioned to me about, you know, having, you know, some kids, you know, coming in and, and, you know, doing things with the city, but I, as I said earlier, you know, if Lee, you know, with his, in the process of looking over everything, could you just kind of look into that, Lee, and see if that'll be feasible for us in this year's budget? Because if it's possible, you know, I mean, I'm, I mean, if, if the Civic Center needs some help from time to time from 4:00 to 6:00, or, you know, need somebody to, you know?
The water department, the library, stuffing envelopes, making copies, you know?
Just for a couple hours, I mean, if it's feasible, I mean, you know, we can just look into it.
Yes, yes sir, we'll look into it.
And again, with it being a pathway or internship or externship, however you want to call it or phrase it, so it's a job training program, so that you have a variety of funds that you might be able to use, but four people helping every week in the meantime, again, it would be a minimal cost because high school kids are not paying all of their own bills, but they do need the experience.
Yeah, okay, all right, that was a good discussion, you know, we're growing to that point, I mean, we, we got a lot of, you know, things on the table, a lot of things that, you know, we're looking at going forward. Thank you, Rachel, for those suggestions and we will look into that. Okay, we're gonna move on to item number 12, city facilities and parks operation, Ms. Ashley, we're sorry.
Good afternoon again, Mayor, Council. We have recently, over the past couple of years, had an increase in our facilities usage, request and, sorry, request and utilization, mainly for, again, our Civic Center, our parks and different things like that. One of the things that we've come to find out as far as like our recreational park, the municipal park for instance, is that with the request, we've had not only our local leagues, but we've had select and travel ball leagues, we've had churches to come about wanting to utilize our park. With the park operations now, everything is done manually, so that is having to have everyone put, come into the office, fill out a contract, and we manually are putting that in. If, for whatever instance, if it gets rained out, we're having to move, move those dates, we have to put in manually for the payments and things like that. With that, we put together a committee. The committee met and decided that we would take before the Parks and Rec Board just some of our concerns on how we are facilitating and operating when it came to parks. One of the biggest things when forming the committee, we looked at all aspects of the park, going back to our vision and mission statement, making it more of equality for all, making it more of a park that not only just our leagues can use or the select leagues, but also for our citizens as well, to be able to use as well. So our committee set up demos, we did researches calling from city to city, from league to league, trying to figure out what would work best for us, what would work, comparing it to, you know, what Splendor does, what Shepherd does, how does the select balls run? We've even called out to possibly hosting tournaments through Perfect Game and different things like that. So with that, our committee called the Woodlands and thanks to some of their staff, they use ActiveNet. ActiveNet is a software programming that helps with day-to-day operations, not just for municipal ball fields, but also it would help for rental, renting stansil as well as renting the Civic Center. They, their platform is more of like an à la carte menu, you would actually go to that website or it, they even have a mobile app as well, you could go to the mobile app, pull it up and I want ball field number two with lights, with concession, or you can go on there and say, okay, is this date available for the Civic Center? I want to go ahead and put down my deposit for this date for the Civic Center. Pretty much giving our citizens an at-hand because we're moving more into the technology world of everything and everyone's wanting to, you know, oh, I want to be the first one to get it, or, oh man, I missed out on my date, well, everything's right there at your fingertips. You could be at Walmart and say, hey, you know what, Friday, I'm going to the ballpark, or, hey, you know what, let me see if that date's available for my daughter's birthday party. So this platform that we looked at just simplifies. Definitely still managing the operations, we would still have to do on the backend, making sure that those that get permitted, because with the system, it'll automatically give them a permit. If you have that permit, you can be at the ballpark, or if you have that permit, then that is your date at the Civic Center. So it actually is kind of in a sense like a check and balance, pretty much, they could pay from their phones and things like that, so just in order to help our operations a little bit, and I know it kind of goes back to what Rachel was saying, you know, getting more help in, in helping with the operations, it also helps with looking at software that may help with operations. We may have, we will have to manage it on the backend, but in the long run, it allows for our citizens to automatically go in and have that à la carte menu to choose what they would like to use. And again, it gives a permit to say that they do have use. ActiveNet also does have where you can run reports, actually 300 reports to be exact, so they have reports from financial to how many permits we're giving, to, you know, just pretty much all the operations that we need to just easily be able to pull, it would help Pam on the financial side to pull any report that, you know, Council may ask for, she could easily pull up, well, what did, what did the numbers look like in April, or what did the numbers look like in November, that type of thing, so everything is right there at a fingertip. But also too, when we presented this to our Parks and Recreation Board, they were, they were all on, on board, and that's kind of my reason for being here today, is to bring it to Council, get Council's blessing for us to be able to move forward with ActiveNet. And I do have a short video, I don't know if it's something that you all would like to see on how ActiveNet works, but I do have a short video to, to show you, okay. So this here is the city of Fort Worth, and this is just a short snippet of what they thought about as far as using ActiveNet work and what it did for their facility use.
My name is Daniel, I'm a business process analyst with the city of Fort Worth. The city of Fort Worth, we were with Class previously, so Class was a previous ActiveNet software product, and so in 2017, Class was at the end of its life, and so we were going to a new product, and ActiveNet was one of the, one of the software groups that we brought in. We narrowed of all the applications, all the bids, we narrowed down to three and then we did a formal interview process. Of those three, there was one that was more focused on just facility rentals, the other one didn't have the, the scope to be able to handle our comprehensive needs, which ActiveNet did, so it really was our, our best and only fit at the time. So for me, it's, it's all about the technology, so the Connect app is huge for us, so the best, the past few years, we've really, we've really dived in, in every area that we can, so checking in, membership scanning, signing waivers through the Connect app, all of those things have really been enhanced and they're much easier to use with the Connect app, much easier to pull the data and the information through the Connect app, just reporting, attendance was huge for us to capture that, going from pen and paper and printing out all those forms, signing on pen and paper, and then taking that information, having to manually enter it then into the system, going away from all of that and having attendance done in the moment, for us is huge. So we have a nature center, we have athletic leagues, athletic field rentals, park reservations for our pavilions, plus all of our libraries, all of our community centers all use it. The amount of, the amount of data that we're able to pull out of ActiveNet from the customers and our financial information and just our, our programming, and then have it powered through the hub, through Power BI, has really been, I mean, has really been awesome for us. The reason we chose ActiveNet was it, it filled our, our comprehensive needs, so all of the different groups that use, for us to use ActiveNet, from libraries to pavilions, aquatics, our athletic leagues, community centers, the, our childcare programs, all of those things, it fills every single one of our cracks that we, that we have. And the other thing is, whenever new things happen, because new programs come up, customers have new needs, our staff have new needs, ActiveNet's been really responsive to either find us a solution, or if it, if there wasn't a solution in the moment, to go on the backend and start working on something for us for the future. So if somebody was, if an organization's on the fence and they're choosing between Active and maybe another product, I would tell them, I would suggest Active because there's, there's truly no limits, and so it meets any, any and every need that you have, but on top of that, they're extremely responsive to whatever your needs and your requests are, and they're constantly building their software and their database to meet whatever your needs are, because it's constantly changing from the customers and the staff, and they're always trying to make it better. So Active, working with ActiveNet has really allowed our staff to become much.
Okay, so that just kind of gives you a snippet of what we're looking at. This ActiveNet program is a build-out. Cleveland is going somewhere, Cleveland is expanding, Cleveland is growing, and we need to be able to offer better quality of life as well as services. This just in turn helps us with our services that we are trying to offer. So we're coming to Council to get your blessing on moving forward with ActiveNet and to get the ball rolling. One of the things that I did feel to mention is the financial, because I know that's probably the part that y'all want to know, the financial, so there is a one-time implementation fee of $5,000, and depending on the modules that we use, because it is a build-out system, so depending on the modules that we use, with this group, they had recommended an essentials packet, package, but that package could also be built out as well, to waivers, to signing their contracts, vendor registrations, all of those good things, so with that essentials package, we have an estimated cost annually of 35 to 5,500 annually, so we're looking at a little, at $10,000, but that also is just that one-time implementation added in there.
I just want to make a note on it, that, so this isn't, today's not to actually approve that funding to move forward.
Yeah.
What we're looking at is we want to try to build around this software that we think's gonna be the best fit for us, and we would come back to Council later with a more finalized product and process of how we want to move forward, but essentially what this does is it takes away the manual process and the contracts that we have to currently do, and it will allow anybody and everybody to go online and book whatever we so choose to put in there, so like a ballpark, if they want the lights, it's something else that they could add, and it's very flexible, so if we have local leagues that we want to offer a discount to because they're local, right, we want to support local leagues, we could put that discount, whatever we want inside that, give them that code, and then they could turn around and whatever they wanted to order them, and they can go in and book for the whole year if they wanted to. So that's just the flexibility of this program, but just giving us the okay to move forward with that, the committee will then get together and get more in-depth in the costs and what we're looking at, and then we will provide all that information at a later date.
And also just to add to that, one of the things too, that I know most of you know that we have been updating our parks, and Municipal Park is on the map to be updated, so we're looking at getting quotes for batting cages, we're looking at updating security out there, we're looking at updating the concession stand out there, so that when leagues or select teams or whatever come to rent, they're able to use the concession stand. So we are looking to put back into the park, and this is just another way for us to keep it sustained, to put back into the park and to keep it growing, we're looking at adding another football and soccer field, so this just helps with the rental operations of everything, and not just that, but Civic Center and stansil.
I, I do have one question, Ashley.
Yes, sir.
Just estimating, this is just, I guess, your opinion, about how many man-hours of work would it save you or your team to be able to implement this technology, like weekly?
I mean, it would definitely, I mean, it just depends on the rentals, but I definitely think if it's something that we're not having to manually put in, it's automatically on the back feed of, you know, the scheduling and things, we could probably save a few hours or handle something else, because we actually have ActiveNet kind of being that middle person for us, but management, you never stop managing it, but it just makes it easier to manage.
Essentially, it'll all be online, I mean, you can go in on their phone, they said, basically, and if you wanted to rent the ballpark, you can go and click it, pay for it, and you're done. It will shoot you a permit, we will get the permit on our side, knowing that that's the ballpark you rented and the date you rented it. They've even said that our, our lighting system that we currently have out there actually integrates with this program, so if they wanted an extra hour of lights or however we decide to set that up, they can go into the phone and do it right there and it will, excuse me, it will automatically update that for the, for the hour, so it would take away a lot of the manual labor part of that.
Right, and yeah, technology is definitely a way to become more efficient, I was just curious if like a one hour a week or 10 hours a week or, you know, 20?
It just, it depends on the rentals, you know, whenever you have a rental, like I said, ballpark is a little slower, but this is also to help us on the Civic Center and stansil side as well, so having more of those platforms on there just helps us to be able to concentrate on other areas that we may have been lacking on or needed to put more focus on.
Okay, Ashley, in the, in the interim, before you can, we can get this software installed, okay, what can we do to kind of referee the concession stand, you know, who uses, you know, we just, what we want to do, we want to make all the facilities available to everybody, you know, but I know right now, you know, we, we kind of right in the middle, and you know, what is, you know, I tell people what has happened, probably 10 years ago, five years ago, we didn't have the kids participating like we do now, and it's a good, I mean, it's a good problem to have, you know, we have more kids participating now, now more than ever, but some kind of way in the interim, you know, whatever you and Lee can come up with, you know, just to kind of, you know, work through this, you know, but it's not the city's intention of favoring any, I mean, we welcome everybody.
Yes, sir.
Every kid, you know, we're not gonna turn, you know, any organization away, but we just need to try to find a way to, to navigate the concession stand and, you know, stuff like that.
Yes, sir, and Lee and I- And Lee and I both have talked, and we've had meetings along with Roger as well. And so that is a plan for us to sit down and look at possibly putting our own city items in the concession stand to where we're able to control and, you know, be able to rent those out in the future. So that's kind of something that's in the works as we speak now.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
As I said, we just, we just want to keep peace.
Yes.
But you know, at the end of the day, it's a good thing that we getting children involved in after-school activities, it takes their mind off of other stuff that they don't need their mind on.
Yes, sir.
So we need to really work on, you know, fixing it to where we can have, everybody can have access to it.
Yes, sir. And that ultimately is...
And it can be done.
Our goal.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
It can be done.
Always go back to our vision and mission statement.
Yes, ma'am.
And so that's what leads us, and that's what we need to stick to.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comment for Ashley? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ashley. Good luck. Okay, our next item will be item number 13, proposed amendments to EDC bylaws, Emilio Laverio.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So the EDC beginning earlier this year took several meetings to assess their bylaws. They had been the original bylaws that were codified with the creation of the corporations. So kind of outdated, didn't really reflect the operational kind of dynamics that we have with having, EDC having staff, didn't really address staffing and the relationship between staff and the board and how the business is conducted of the corporation. So the bylaws that you have now, you have a redlined version and a clean version. Those are crafted over several meetings, feedback from the board members over a few meetings, and feedback from our city attorney as well. So we think what we've presented definitely represents and will align with how we do things operationally and the relationship between staff and the board and management. And so we recommend approval for that. And the board has recommended approval, rather. And Mr. McWaters can also testify to that as well.
I do have a few questions. I don't know, as far as the red line, the line items, the changes. So should I address them to you or to our city attorney? Like, who is...
We can all take a stab at it.
Okay. All right. Do you have a copy in front of you?
I wrote, I helped write most of them, so I'll try.
Okay. Okay, because I have some throughout the document itself. Okay. Section 301, under Board of Directors, Management of the Corporation, halfway down, it's on page 41, if anyone is trying to find that, I'll give everyone a minute. But 301, Management of the Corporation, halfway down, it says, "The Board may, by contract resolution or otherwise, give general or limited or special power and authority to officers and employees of the corporation to transact the general business or any special business of the corporation, and may give powers of attorney to agents of the corporation to transact any special business requiring such authorization." Does that mean with those special powers, any member, when you say officers, does that mean any member of the board itself, when you say officers? And does that mean one individual alone has that authority to do, to transact business individually?
So I think it does mean officers of the board. And it would be whatever authority is granted to them and whatever resolution or type of document, power of attorney, that is drafted up with our legal counsel. So it's not sweeping authority, it'd be very narrow, whatever the context of that mission or that task is.
But it could be an individual?
If it was named that way.
Okay.
Like, we want the treasurer to address this banking issue, and here's the power of attorney for them to deal with the bank.
Okay. And most of these questions that I have, I think I numbered them, there's six. You know, with our system, our government, our constitution, with checks and balances, having internal and external controls, which are best for transparency and, you know, staying on the up and up. I know that when we're issued checks, even by the finance department here, monthly, we do receive a council member check. I receive $25 a month, thank you, but it's also signed by two people. And so I think that there should always be two eyes on any transaction, is what I'm going with here. And this is probably going to come up throughout multiple questions about how one person could receive special authority, who grants that special authority, you know, for one person without having a second person. I understand if someone, the finance, the treasurer, needs to do something with finance, but then who's that second person for accountability, transparency, and all of the above? So about the individual. So that's one question that I have. If you turn the page...
[inaudible]
Right, but to an individual?
Right. The board can't delegate, it's, the board can't delegate. If the board is required to take action, and the corporation's required to take action, it can't delegate the responsibility to take action. What it could do is vote to take action, and then, you know, in the hypothetical of like a land, purchase landfill, you know, agreement, you know, authorize a specific officer to execute all necessary documents in connection with that agreement. It's more of a general corporate...
The board gives the direction, and one person can, so I understand that. So does that person who authorizes or moves forward, they have the right to negotiate? Or there's a second person involved?
Everything still has to come through us before it can be approved for EDC to even negotiate.
This is very narrow scope and very actionable items, like everything's already went through all the thing, and you may be at the very end to where somebody's got to go make a signature or other specific actions. But no, there's nobody that's going to have any broad authority to make grand decisions, especially when, before it coming through council or anything less. And as you read through here, a lot of the wording that we have altered was clearing up, because I think in former, the former iteration of this gave kind of, the way it was worded, almost gave too much control to whoever was sitting as president. And depending on how you read it, so we kind of tried to clean a lot of that up to where it was a board decision. But ultimately, everything still has to come through council.
Right. Well, and it depends on the monetary amount, as far as who, like, executed and things like that, based off of whatever was put in place back when they presented it to me. But I understand that. And cleaning up to not necessarily say the president, it just seems like, again, two eyes. If a $25 check gets two eyes, I don't know why any contract want to get two pairs of eyes, is the question. On the next page, under 3.06, it's about the special called meetings. And understandable, there might need to be an issue or a special called meeting. There, it was strike through, about a 72-hour notice. I don't know if that means you would not be providing 72-hour notice for a public meeting, or if it's just strike through because it mentioned delivering the packets. So are you still going to have a 72-hour notice for a special called meeting?
Yeah, that language is redundant, because we're required to open the, over the Open Meetings Act, we're required to do that.
And actually, and so part of the reason for the change was to, rather than getting into the weeds on like, the Open Meetings Act requires us to do this, 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 and this, to say, we're required, we're required to follow the Open Meetings Act, we will follow the Open Meetings Act. And then as sort of a reason that you worded that way, since this draft was prepared, the Open Meetings Act was amended. So it's no longer 72 hours, it's three business days.
Right.
Otherwise, we would be having to go back and then redo this all again. But yeah, that's, there's, there's no change in that, that's state law.
Okay. So I know with special called meetings for council, if there's an emergency or something, it'd be less than 72 hours. So this isn't giving that authority to have less than 72 hours, it's just saying you do Open Meetings Act.
Right. You follow the Open Meetings Act.
Okay, great. Next one, or the next page here, it's under 3.12, compensation. And it says that the appointed members of the board shall serve without compensation, but may be reimbursed for their cost of travel, lodging, or incidental expenses, while on official business, completely reasonable. I'm just curious if y'all are using the same policies and rates for hotel, food, and mileage that city employees and staff use? And if that can be included in this, that it falls under the same regulations as everybody at City Hall?
It does. We do follow whatever the government rates are set at, similar to staff and council as well.
And local policy also, like hotels or meal rates or anything, that's what the cost of the reimbursement is?
Yeah, what's it called? Per diem? But what's that called? Who sets that? The IRS? Oh, that's mileage. That's a mileage, but yeah.
Yeah, the mileage, the food and the lodging?
Right.
Okay. So we're not paying like $1,000 a night for a hotel?
No.
Okay. Yeah. Okay, cool. All right. The next page, I just got a couple more here. I think it's under 4.05. This is under the duties of the officers of the president. And so it does mention that he can be authorized to sign the contracts and things. And it's going back to the initial question of having more than just one individual sign. It says, "With the execution of any contract or instrument shall have been authorized by the board, the president shall execute where such power is expressed to that officer." So again, it's really just piggybacking off of whether or not there's going to be more than one person involved, whether it's the president, vice president, president, treasurer, president, and city manager, you know, just two sets of eyes. Is that something under consideration? Or it will maintain being one person to execute contracts?
Typically, it's the chair that executes the contract, the president. Sometimes the vice president, if there's no sitting president. I don't, I wouldn't execute any contracts that are EDC-related. That's just typical precedent. I don't know if that needs to be codified in the bylaws. I don't know if I understand the question.
Yeah, because, I mean, no one would be making that signature without it already going through the voting process of the board. So you've gotten permission from multiple people to execute that contract. No one's, no one's...
They already have eyes on it, it's just a signature.
And that, that contract doesn't change, or there's, like, the details of the contract are presented to the board in full? And it's just a signature?
Correct.
Though, again, then if it's just a signature, you could have two, yes, Pam?
I think it will be similar to when you ask the city manager authority to authorize the contract on the app of the city, same process, the contract will be presented to the board, and then the authorized person will just sign what was already presented to the board.
Right. Okay, I'm understanding. I just, again, this is going back to the original, and I understand it's very similar. It's just about, at one point, there is a monetary amount, like, it was under this much money, you didn't have to take it to the board. But that was just put into place a year or two ago, and I don't remember the thresholds, but that was implemented, correct?
So if it's under that threshold, then the city manager would execute that contract?
Okay. Because it was presented to the EDC board, like, for how the EDC would operate. It was under Ms. Mary Ann as the one who presented it to us at the time. So do you know what that threshold is? That doesn't have to be presented to the board, how many, how much money?
50,000?
25,000?
25,000, yeah.
So someone can execute a contract up to $25,000 without presenting to the board? But we have two people sign a $25 check?
If it's budgeted, typically, that's our benchmark.
Okay. All right. And then the last part here, I'm pretty sure here, yeah, it's the page 47, so it's under the management, it's part 4.11 and 5.01. And I think it's redundant language and the redundant question, just because it's going back to saying that it could be any agent or corporation to transact any special business. And then down in 5.01, it says, "The Board of Directors may authorize any officer or agent of the corporation." So any officer would, meaning the elected officers, not just board members, so president, vice president, treasurer, secretary, is that correct? And it says, "To enter into a contract or execute and deliver any instrument in the name of or on behalf of the corporation, this authority may be limited to a specific contract or instrument, or it may extend to any number and type of contracts and instruments." So that, that kind of seems like a broad...
It's more, I think it's more related to instruments, because like we talked about earlier, the president's going to typically execute a contract. There may be some instruments that, that other officers may be able to help execute or assist with.
Yeah, it's, so it's, what this does is clarify the corporate power of agency. And so the EDC, unless it's circumscribed by state law to where it's not allowed to delegate certain authority, and that, that exists, any governmental body can delegate certain things, and they cannot delegate other things. With that, they could, you know, let's go back to the, to a purchase agreement for land. It could often be, in fact, I'll go back to the previous example. You could have it to where it's authorized to negotiate and execute an agreement in substantially the same form. So there may be things that are tweaked, that are slightly different from what the board actually sees, but the parameters are defined in terms of what is being adjusted. So it's not like, you know, we may need to tweak certain sections, but we know essentially it's going to end up in this range, it's going to end up in that range, maybe the number changes up or down, who knows? Then the purchase and sale agreement could be executed. And as part of that, the officer that's authorized to execute that agreement could then also be authorized to execute any and all documents associated with closing on the property. And that's a whole lot of documents. I mean, anyone that's seen a closing. So it's, it could be a range of documents. It could even be broader than that. Personally, I don't think it can be...
More narrow?
I just don't know what purpose is served by its big, well, I don't think it can be endlessly broad. I think it can be broader than a specific transaction. It could be two transactions, but there's going to be action on each transaction to begin with.
Okay. Well, and so I think, so, and this is just my own interpretation of it, the statement that the board may authorize any officer or agent of the corporation to enter into a contract, which means start a contract, or execute and deliver any instrument in the name of or on behalf of the corporation, and it may be limited to the specific contract or instruments, or extend to any number and type of contracts and instruments, which you're saying, like a closing, there might be other things. That just seems pretty broad. And again, this is only going back to the system of checks and balances, internal and external controls, and taxpayer money, and things like, there's something about $25,000 or less, you don't even have to bring it to the board, right? And if we're accounting for every dollar, then, you know, how can we make sure that that is, you know, that those controls are in place?
To clarify, going more narrow than that would mean it is going more narrow than any other governmental entity, including the city, including the county, and, and I'm not even specifying a county, I'm saying all of them. They all retain a general power of agency to authorize officers to execute a number of steps. You know, it's a, you know, it, so the two signatures on the check thing, the two eyeballs on that, that's the check. But the contract that was subject to that check was approved by city council in the exact same manner as it would be approved by here. There's no change in that process whatsoever.
[inaudible] And then they could execute that contract.
There is, there is a couple, but I would have to go back to the power, and that might have changed since the two years since Mary Ann presented, but there is thresholds of when it could just be executed versus presented to the board. But those are all my questions, so thank you. But that is, again, just making sure that not just one person has, you know, kind of total, without oversight, without some controls on it.
And I'm not, I'm not a signatory on the bank document, so I can't sign checks. So that's kind of a check and balance there. I may be able to assemble kind of contracts and agreements and things like that, but at the end of the day, I can't execute, I can't pay people without these other checks and balances in place.
All right. Thank you. And Emilio, this, and the, thanks for answering the questions. And it wasn't even really in regards to your position, because it kept saying any member of the board. So like, that just means anyone can be picked and said, like, to go in and execute and enter contracts. So I just felt like, again, it's better to have two than one for, you know, some transparency. But thank you.
All righty. Okay. Any other questions or comments?
I think the motion approved item number 13.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Buckley, a second by Mr. McWaters. All those in favor? Okay, motion carries five to zero. Okay, item number 14, designating a portion of State Highway 105 as Veterans Memorial Parkway, and Mr. Tipton has the information on that.
That wasn't me. Thank you, Mayor. Last time Mr. Willie Carter came before council was wanting some support to rename portion of the 105 bypass to the Veterans Memorial... to the Veterans Memorial Parkway. So staff made contact with text dot and we found, if you look at your paperwork, it's on page four, basically, the application process in your packet. Essentially, we would need to do a resolution from the council, authorizing a portion of that highway to be named after the Veterans Memorial Parkway. The signage and all that would be the responsibility of the agency. But Mr. Willie Carter says that he's going to try to go out and maybe find some sponsorships for that. So which would in turn not be a cost to the city. We will incur the cost of future maintenance and repair of that. But I think for what it is and what it represents, I think it would be well worth doing. And staff recommends that we create a resolution and send to the text dot.
Okay, that is up for discussion.
Mr. Tipton, I just have one question. This was previously under another council and it did say that it would be covered, the cost. Was that like a special, like one time where the state covered the cost of it? Or this is the only one that, like through reading it, that there are some costs associated to the city?
Yeah, so my understanding is, is in read through their processes, we have to buy the signage. Text dot will come out and put it up. And then we are responsible for the future, future maintenance and repair.
Okay, I, I understand the maintenance definitely. I thought the signage part was, whenever it was under that other council, that it had said in the, in the notes that I read that it was at no cost. So I was just curious if that was still, I know Mr. Carter's going to go and get some funds. So by chance that we don't get all the funds, then we are willing as a city to cover. We have, we can cover it if the funds don't come in through collection, through like sponsorships?
Yes, we would be able to cover that and that would be something I would bring back to council for approval.
Okay.
This is just for the resolution to move forward with that. And once they approve it, then we would wait on the sponsorship donations for that. And if, again, that doesn't come to fruition, then we would bring it back.
Okay.
For the funding part.
Do we need to designate a certain portion or just all of the bypass?
Yes, we would have to designate. So you could have up to two signs if it's less than seventy-five miles or a hundred and fifty, I believe. So it's less than that, so we would put one at both ends, but we would have to designate that as well, which we would put together.
So that means from one oh five coming back east, I mean, yeah, east.
On the bypass?
Yeah, one oh five west to one oh five east. One sign on both ends.
I'll make a motion that we designate a portion of State Highway one oh five as Veterans Memorial Parkway.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Ms. Hall, second by Mr. Buckley, all those in favor? Okay, motion carries five to zero. Okay, item number fifteen, fire protection agreement between Liberty County and the city of Cleveland. Chief Sean Anderson. I think he might have some good news for us. Hopefully.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Should have been up here in front of you last month. But with the, we'll go with the changes in the Fire Marshal's Office. They had to work through some items. We did receive the contract, or I received the contract, looked through it and saw some items and brought it to Mr. Timpton's and Ms. Harrison's attention and, and met with both of them. And so we requested some changes to the contract back to the county. And they were agreeable to those. The county legal department and the city's legal department both looked at the contract that's before you. It is still for the two hundred thousand dollars that we got last year. I know we discussed that last year and we were concerned about what it, what it could be this year, but it is still the two hundred thousand dollars. So I'm requesting that council approve. The way they write it up is there's a signature page and they ask for the, the mayor and for the fire chief to sign it. So we're asking that we both be able to sign the contract and be able to have another year of protecting the citizens outside the city.
I make a motion that we approve the fire protection agreement between Liberty County and the city of Cleveland. And also extend our thanks to Liberty County for increasing that payment this year.
Second.
Yeah, same as last year.
Well, from prior.
We'll take it, at least I will. I'm cheap.
Now, on discussion with it real quick, can we kind of talk to them and say about increasing it following year? I mean, I know you keep track of it all and you submit it to them.
Yes, sir. So we're, we're still tracking the, the cost per, the, the, the runs that we do outside of the city limits that the, the city budget doesn't cover. Per the, the, what's the master rate schedule? The funds that we, the way we have it set up in there for like the billing stuff that we do and the costs that we would accrue for that. And we submit that to the county every month with our, our runs that we have. And what those associated costs would be, of course, subtracting the amount of the agreement. So it's, we're just showing them this, the difference between what they're paying us versus what we're actually spending to do that same level of protection. So that we can utilize that as, as a way to try to increase in the future.
Okay, thank you, Chief Anderson. I do have a, a motion on the floor, Ms. Hall, a second by Mr. Mike Waters. No other discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Okay, motion carries five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Item number sixteen, awarding construction contract for GLO mid-mod generator, contract number twenty-four dash zero six five dash one 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 dash E nine two four. Roger Brooks.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, city manager, all those in attendance. As you know, we were working on this for the last two years as far as the generators for the lift stations and the fire station. So we did finally come up with a bid, sent it out for RFP and only two contractors bid this project. I do have the, the engineering firm here also, and she was giving you a brief information on this project also.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'm Holly Ian Echka with Strain Associates. And I was present during the bid opening on October seventh. As Roger mentioned, there were two bids that were received. And y'all should have the bid tabulation in front of you. The low bid was seven hundred seventy-nine thousand thirty-nine dollars. And that included the base bid with the bid alternatives one and two. That contractor was McDonald Municipal and Industrial. So we have previously worked with them as well as the city. We deem them to be a responsible contractor. So at this time, we would recommend to approve them for this, this construction contract.
So do we need to approve item sixteen A, correct?
Yeah, to McDonald. We're going to do them separate?
Correct.
Sixteen, okay.
Yes, so those were the two bidders. McDonald was the low bidder.
Oh, okay, yeah, the lowest, yeah.
Make a motion to approve McDonald Municipal and Industrial for item number sixteen for the GLO mid-mod generator.
Second.
Okay, I have a, a motion by Mr. Buckley, a second by Mr. Warwick, all those in favor? Okay, motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay. Item seventeen, consider and adopt a resolution to designate authorized signatories for the community development block grant, discuss disaster recovery program, C B D G dash D R for GLO state contract numbers, twenty-five dash one forty-three dash zero zero five dash F three forty-one, twenty-five dash one four-three dash zero six-six dash F three forty-two, and twenty-five dash one forty-three zero zero seven dash F three four three. Ms. Pam?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. This item is for the DRRP grant that was awarded for water, sewer and drainage repairs and improvements. And this is just, like it says, authorized for approving the authorized signatories for the grant. That gives me the mayor and the city manager authorization to sign off on financial and contractual agreements for the city.
Make a motion to approve item number seventeen.
Second.
Okay, I have a, excuse me, I have a motion by Mr. Buckley, I have a second by Mr. Mike Waters, all those in favor? Okay, motion carries. Okay, before I go to item eighteen, I just want to thank Pam, Roger, Lee. You know, we have been fortunate enough to receive a lot of this, you know, GLO grant money. And it's just, just a, it's needed. And it just came at the right time and, you know, and I want to thank Pam for, you know, you have to dot all your i's and cross all your t's, you know, before this money pays off. And she's just been, been, been done a tremendous job of, you know, keeping everything straight on that. And I think, did we get another application, was it last week or so, of another grant that we might be qualified for?
Yes, that's actually number twenty-four on the agenda tonight.
Great, yeah. Yeah, well, we've, we've gotten so many, I mean, I, I've just been bombarded, you know, one point four million, five million. You know, I.
Fourteen million?
Yeah, I mean, and I'm like, hey, I mean, that's, I can get used to it though, hey, bring it on. But once again, thank you, Pam. Thanks to everyone for the, for the work that we've done and let's just keep on. I was able to go down to the ceremony and, and meet the Texas Land Commissioner. And I was very, very pleased, you know, the city of Tomball, city of Baytown, city of Houston. And, and, you know, we were all receiving grants, you know, seven million, eight million. One city got thirty million, you know, and I was glad to get our one point four million. I mean, I was proud of that, you know. So let's just keep doing it. I mean, let's just go out and, and seek and find any state of, I mean, type of resources that we can get. So once again, thank you. Okay? Item number eighteen, discuss, consider and adopt a resolution regarding civil rights, which includes the following policies, citizens' participation plan, grievance procedures, section three policy, excessive force policy, limited English proficiency, standard plans, section five oh four policy for the grievance procedures, code of conduct policy for our housing policy. Okay?
This one is the same as seventeen, it's for the DRRP grant. Just more policies that the city has to adopt by resolution in order to move forward with the grant. And this grant is for four point five million total.
I'll make a motion that we adopt a resolution regarding civil rights, including the following policies, A, B, C, D, E, F and G.
Second.
Man, that was quick. Five four, five point four million? Okay, I have a motion by Ms. Hall, a second by Mr. Buckley, all those in favor? Okay, motion carries five to zero. Great. Okay. Proclaim April, item nineteen, proclaim April as fair housing month. This proclamation will help fulfill fair housing activity obligations required by the grant. Ms. Pam?
And again, this one is for the DRRP grant. We have to have at least one event a year. Emilio is working on that for the next, for November twelfth. And this, we will, we have to have a fair housing month also. So we'll complete the event, host the event next month. And then having April as fair housing month will meet the requirements of the grant.
Make a motion, we approve number nineteen, proclaim April as fair housing month.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Mike Waters, second by Mr. Buckley, all those in favor? Okay, motion carries five to zero. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Pam. Item number twenty, approval of municipal maintenance agreement and resolution with Texas Department of Transportation. Roger Brooks.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. In the past years, the city has been neglected of maintenance agreement with text dot for their right of way throughout this whole Cleveland city limits. So it's been since two thousand twenty-two, I reached out to the supervisor over there and they finally, finally got a hold of it. So I just need your approval and approving this and adopt this maintenance program.
I make a motion that we approve the municipal maintenance agreement and resolution with text dot and the city.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Ms. Hall, a second by Mr. Buckley, all those in favor? Okay, motion carries.
I have one question.
Yes, sir?
If you don't mind. How many times are they going to take care of it after this agreement?
I don't know. They're, they're supposed to be maintaining this process. So I was probably still on top of them.
To get them to stay on top?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, there you go.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Roger. Okay, item twenty-one, amendment to hangar K contract, Eric Galindo.
Mayor, Council, City Manager. So just recommending approval for amendment to hangar K. So back in twenty twenty-one, the city entered an agreement with Mr. Stevens to bring a hangar out to the airport. And for reimbursement, we would collect the money that we got for that rent and then pay him back. Since we approved the hangar rates back in August, we're just going to amend this contract so it could reflect the change that we're receiving now for the new hangar rates and to reimburse Mr. Stevens with that new amount.
I'll make a motion that we approve the amendment to hangar K contract.
Second, I got a question.
Yes.
Will this knock any time off with increasing, because we increased the rate there?
Yes, it, yeah, so it'll decrease the time that we have that, you know, he will own the, the, the hangar and then we'll pay him back, then we'll get.
Start collecting all of it. Thank you.
Okay, I had a motion and second, okay, all those in favor? Okay, motion carries five to zero. Thank you, Eric. Okay, item number twenty-two, update the Cleveland Animal Shelter. Chief Bruce are.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Public. We appreciate the opportunity to speak to you this afternoon about our animals and to let you know that everything is well at the pound. There was a lot of comments made at the last meeting about things that I was able to verify and want to bring factual information to you tonight on is a purpose. And Lee and I had talked and said it would be a good idea to just kind of update you that we have an open door always at the animal control pound at two oh nine Peach. And you're welcome to stop by. And if you would see in the Department of State Health Services, that they made one large comment at the bottom of that audit that they did, how clean it was. If you may notice that in your packets, there was one highlighted big written message from the zoologist that wrote that, that said, very clean. And I will tell you, I've been in a lot of animal control facilities and many of them, when you pull into the parking lot, you could almost have the aroma of not wanting to go inside. But generally, when you go to this one here down the street, it's generally always clean. We do understand that our animal control at the time was going through the police academy and may have had some lacking on some issues whenever the volunteers arrived in the afternoons. Whenever they only spent a couple hours in the afternoons at that facility, Billy normally spends six or seven hours in and out and patrolling the streets and picking up animals, adopting odd animals in the run of a day. As he feeds them, generally twice a day, in the morning times when he gets in and in the afternoon before he leaves. And if he doesn't, then a lot of times I try to make sure that that's done. But when they get there. But when they get there, a lot of times in the afternoons, the dogs may have already tipped over their water pails. Um, they may have already eaten and then that's whenever the feces start, of course, because we're feeding them well. Uh, but there was some comments made that, um, he was not doing any of that. Uh, I just want to clarify that, again, there's lots of food. One of the verifications on my looking around and vetting what was happening and what was being said was that there was no food and we don't buy food. In June somewhere twenty twenty-four, there were five hundred bags of food donated by Petsmart. And we still have an overabundance of that food at our shelter at this time. That just include, includes those bagged items, dry food. We also have another animal, uh, room that is full of dri- uh, wet food, we call it, and treats, which I was able to provide those pictures to you, should be in your packet. And it is still there now at the pound, uh, because we have such an overabundance of it. But I just want to verify that, that we have plenty of food, so there's not a purpose to run out and purchase food when you have so much that we're trying to get rid of. You may have noticed that on last month, there was a event that took place at our shelter and there was ten dogs adopted out. I did verify that they were correct, that they adopted out forty-nine in, uh, August. So when those dogs went out, a lot of them were flown around the country, a lot of them were adopted out, and they were in good shape. And I have pictures of those whenever, if any of you want to see them, before and after shots of them. But many of them that went out were very highly, uh, adopted and wanted by many, uh, people throughout the country that wanted those dogs. Um, as far as having a vaccine event on weekends, the last time we did one, the attendance was very low. There's always one here, you'll notice the signs at Ace Hardware almost every Sunday. Also at Tractor Supply, they're having one coming up this month, two actually, uh, the eighteenth, which just, well, yeah, be coming up, uh, just passed, the eighteenth, and they also have another one coming up first of November. So with all those people giving these va- rabies and vaccines events, not technically always free, but they do pay the veterinarian some type of donation fee, I didn't see a reason why we should be running out, having staff and paying staff to do, uh, those type of events whenever they were doing them for free here around town at a very, very low cost. So that was said, that we should have one of those. But that was some of the reason why we don't, because of those events that take place so, so often here in our community. Uh, again, we talked about passing of inspection, uh, Dr. Ely is our rabies, uh, control here in town. He goes in and does the inspection, he comes by from time to time. Also, the state comes by from time to time and do, does what we call pop-in inspections. So we try to be prepared and have things clean and sterile at the time that they come by. There was a complaint about some water leaks, those water leaks have been repaired. One was done by public work staff, the little valve at the trap, which I'm sure with a plumber in the room can tell you, if you don't turn that little plastic, uh, uh, what do you call it? Or, uh, gasket, there you go. If you don't turn that little pump gasket the right way, then it's gonna cause a little bit of a leak and that's what was taking place underneath our wash tub down there, that they kept saying was leaking in a little pail. It was only a small drip. We got that flipped over in the proper direction and there's no longer a problem there. As far as the water leak, if we had a water leak on the faucet, when you turn it, if you turn it too far, too fast, I'm sure you can attest that you could strip it out and that's what was taking place, it was being stripped out. I took a screwdriver, tightened it down, it worked for a little bit and it got stripped back out again. But it's been totally replaced now, we put a brand new one on there, that's a little bit more harder to push around so it wouldn't be stripped out. Um, there's numerous videos, if anybody wants to see how cared the dogs are, when you go in, there's generally always food in the bucket, or either there's food just been put out, or either they just completed their food. Uh, so it's always the dogs are kept and fed at a reasonable time and on time and very well taken care of. Um, so I'd just like to say that a lot of things that were said are, you know, what we're trying to do is build a relationship with those volunteers. It is a privilege for them to be able to go in, a lot of departments don't allow veteran volunteers to go in. We do allow it and they've done a lot for us and I do compliment them for that. And in your package, you saw there were some questions about the money and the donations. Whenever we get a check on donation, it goes straight to finance. We don't touch it, we don't use it, we, I mean, as far as for our own personal use of the pound, it goes straight into a donation, uh, GL code within the city. And if you notice, they were talking about not having funds, August the seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, they raised seven thousand dollars and six, seven thousand six hundred ninety-five dollars. What that money went to, where it was used, how it was used, was totally put in their pockets. We never touched it, never saw it, but they used our facility to do it. And that's what I see a lot of times, is animals are being brought in and we're having these events there and they do these fundraisers and they collect the monies and we know nothing about it, where it goes and how it's used. So there was not any, I don't want to say not any facts to it, but they should have plenty of funding to do whatever they need to do as far as helping out at the pound if that's what they wish to do. But that just kind of wraps up a little bit of my verification of what I did find out. There were some personality things going on there that created some of that, I think, and that did not help. But, uh, I think with the new partnership or our new animal control, she has a bachelor of science degree in animal science. She started on this past Monday, uh, she had a pre-planned family vacation going, uh, she's taking this week, but she will be back on Monday. Hopefully, we can continue our relationship with our volunteers to build a stronger relationship and continue to get the dogs out. We only had, you may have saw in your packet, last year, we only, so far in twenty twenty-five, we've only euthanized three dogs. And the one that they talked about that was down, that afternoon, that dog was at a pound or at a veterinarian clinic at their expense. And of course, they kept telling us, and we would have probably had to wait till the next morning because it was gonna cost X amount of thousand dollars to get the dog back up and going. But it wasn't intentional, our part, to allow that dog to be there, he appeared to be uncomfortable in the position that he was in in the kennel. And we were making plans and talking back and forth with them about what was gonna take place, who was gonna foot it and if we were gonna have to put the dog down, and they said, "No, we'll do it, we're just trying to collect the funds now and do what we need to do to get it done." So only three this year have been euthanized and there was a total of eight last year in twenty twenty-four. But we normally try not to, uh, put the dogs down. And we've only spent three hundred forty-four dollars this year, eleven point four percent of our budget in euthanization. We have three thousand dollars in our euthanasia, uh, veterinarian expenses, we've only spent three hundred dollars. So that just tells you, we try to save them, we try to get them adopted out and fostered out the best we can and take care of the animals. And that's what we did.
Well, uh, Chief, you know, we, we appreciate what you, what you do on that. And, you know, going forward, you know, you had told me about the new, uh, animal control officer and maybe she can, uh, kind of, uh, maybe relate to the volunteers.
Yes, sir.
Uh, you know, I got a, uh, lot of, uh, uh, I'm not gonna say complaints, but a lot of concerns, you know, about that department. But in a lot of cases, you know, they get us confused with what goes on at Colony Ridge.
I agree.
You know, I got showed a lot of photos of dogs, you know, and I'm like, man, this is not the city of Cleveland. You know, and I get them all the time and I, I always respond to them and let them know that this is, this doesn't happen in our city and, and we just really, really need to hammer that on to those that, you know, come up with that. You know, this is Cleveland, Texas, not Colony Ridge. Now, they have seven seven three two seven area code, zip code, rather. But it's not the city of Cleveland. So that's a lot of, you know, we take a lot of flack...
We do.
And behind that, you know, and, but the, the, the volunteers, they don't understand. They, they don't know any better. And most of them, when I explain it to them, you know, their attitude, you know, kind of changed. So, uh, maybe, you know, going forward with, with the new, uh, uh, animal control, maybe she can really hammer that home to, to the volunteers, you know, so.
Certainly will.
Thank you. And I know that's a, that's a tough to deal with, because, you know, I had a couple of meetings and, uh, you know, uh, they love animals and there's nothing wrong with that, but they love animals.
Oh, yeah.
I love them too, but they love them, love them. So...
We encourage, I encourage each one of you to stop by any time, snap a little hat.
Chief, I, I do have a question. I do have a question. It is, um, not on the animal shelter specifically, it's on the animal control, I guess, the, the position, which I understand is new. I see here where you had made the note that all after our animal calls are handled, handled by patrol officers. How long has that been in effect?
Forever.
Okay, so...
I started nineteen eighties.
Is that, um, just when animals are on the loose or is that when they are injured?
Anytime, if they're on the loose, uh, the officers are responsible. If for some reason one is injured, then they would probably contact animal control, who is on call out. Uh, but normally, very seldom does that happen, that we get one that's down or injured. It's normally they are catching one that's running somebody's yard or nuisance.
Okay, well, I'm gonna tell you a personal experience that I had with my daughter on her birthday in May. Uh, we went out to eat to celebrate, we came home and on our street, there was an injured, which looked to be an unalive dog. And I did call the non-emergency line, this is back in May, so this is several months ago. And with speaking with this dispatcher, I was told that officers do not handle it um, because I had a concern that, one, it was in the middle of the road and could potentially cause an accident for, there's a dark street, right? A motorcycle, a car, because there's something large in the middle of the road. Um, and when I asked if anybody could come out and handle it, the sheriff's office or if anyone had someone available, they said, "No, because the sheriff's office doesn't enter into our jurisdiction, understandable, we're city limits." Um, and it was a neighbor eventually who ended up having to come out and to remove that dog in regards to how to properly, um, take care of an animal that, again, might be, um, injured or unalive. So that is just a personal experience, but if it's something that if we can communicate, um, with residents who do call in after hours, I was specifically told that it was weekend after hours and no one would be in until Monday to handle it.
Right, and that was probably misinterpreted by a communications staff there at the police department. But any of you that are sitting here tonight have my number, feel free to call me and we can correct that. But I will cover that with our communications division that, and they know the answer to that, that anytime there's an animal call, that the officer will respond and that's the way we do it, and I'll make sure that's corrected.
Okay, well, I'm just saying, so calling in as a resident to non-emergency, that is not what was communicated directly to me.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Maybe one of our new staff. Yes, right. It may have been one of our new staff that wasn't on, we'll make sure it's communicated.
Right, and I have seen them come and collect animals on the loose, I have seen that, that's why I asked if this was in regards to only those on the loose or to injured specifically, because I did call in and say that it was an injured animal.
Any animals, livestock, chickens, dogs, pigs, raccoons, we'll respond, the officers will respond. Yes.
Don't forget about your snakes that you currently have.
Yes, I have a very new one that I've never seen in my career. We have two pythons down at the animal control shelter that we're having to maybe buy some mice for. Trying to find adopters and foster care all day, but it hadn't happened. I almost had, uh, Eric convinced.
Okay, uh, Chief, we thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much.
Any questions, please, feel free to call me.
Yes, sir, yes, sir. Okay, uh, we're gonna move on to item number twenty-three. Uh, designate, uh, representative and alternate to the Houston-Gaveston Area Council for twenty twenty-six, General Assembly, Lee Tipton.
Yes, sir, Mayor, this is just a housekeeping item, that, uh, council's gonna have to designate a primary and a secondary member to be a, uh, voting member for the General Assembly of twenty twenty-six.
Okay, was that Ms. Day? We got a volunteer? Okay, well, uh, keep...
I'll make a motion for Desiree.
I'll be the alternative.
I'll make a motion that, uh, Desiree is our, uh, is our representative and Ms. Rachel Hall be our alternate.
Okay, I got a motion by Mr. Mack Waters, a second by, uh, Mr. Buckley, all those in favor? Okay, motion carries. Okay, item twenty-four, authorization of city, city staff to approve grant applications for local communities programs with the Texas General Land Office, Lee Tipton.
Yes, sir, Mayor, we're aggressively seeking grants that we can apply for and this one is gonna be two for the twenty twenty-four disasters. Um, it is a local communities program, they've set aside ninety-seven million dollars. Uh, we have the ability to apply for two of those and they could be anywhere between five hundred thousand to five million each. Um, we've looked at the funding for that and if, by God's grace, we were given both of those at five million, it would be a million out of our pocket and I believe we have that funding to make that happen. So this would just be, uh, staff's recommendation to move forward with, uh, trying to reach out for these two grants.
Make a motion, make a motion, we authorize city staff to approve grant application for local community program.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Mack Waters, I have a second by Mr. Buckley, all those in favor? Okay, motion carries, uh, five to zero. Okay, now, we will now, uh, convene executive session, executive session. The city council reserves the right to adjourn an executive session at any time during a meeting to discuss any item agenda as authorized by chapter five five one of the Texas Government Code. Uh, the Texas Open Meetings Act, the city council will meet an executive session as authorized. The Texas Open Meeting Act for the following purposes. Uh, item twenty-five, five five one oh seven one, legal consultation. Land on a potential petition for a release of certain property from the city's ex- extraterritorial jur- jurisdiction. Uh, five five one oh seven four, personnel matters and five five one oh seven, well, oh, seven one, consultation with attorney. Deliberations on legal consultation regarding, uh, public office employee. Okay, we will now convene an executive session, uh, let's say about eight forty-five? Oh, no, that's right, seven forty-seven. Yeah. Yeah.
Back in open session. Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
Okay, have a motion by Mr. Buckley, have a second by Mr. Ward. Let's go home.